All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Casa Grande's March 21st Study Session. I think the first item on the agenda tonight is our Streetscape Project, so Planning and Development Department. Mr. Horn, you're going to give us the update, or part of it?
Yeah, good evening, Council, Mayor. I want to start off by saying I think TCU should have had a foul shot at the end of that game last night. That was clearly a foul. We're going to introduce the Florence Boulevard.
We're sorry.
We're going to introduce the Florence Boulevard Streetscape Project. Last year, City Council approved the CIP, including the contract for design services with our consultant, J2 Design. Since that time, our consultant's been working on the background information and base mapping information for the project, and tonight is going to be the introductory kickoff for the actual design for the project. We're going to touch base on design elements and design schedule for the project, including the stakeholder process and proposed key dates. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our consultant, J2, and Jeff Velazquez and Kurt Monte of J2 Design.
Yeah, this is Joseph. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Joseph. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Velazquez. I'm a principal landscape architect with J2 Design. We're a local, small business here in the Phoenix-Tempe border, and we're excited to be working with you. With me is Kurt Monte, landscape architect, project manager. We'll run you through the remainder of the slides. We have worked with the city in the past, Carmack Nat, Pier Park Master Plan, Grande Sports World, and Florence Street Downtown in years past. So we've been around over the past 20 years, working with you, and we appreciate the opportunity to work on this Streetscape Master Plan and Design. One of the things that is very important to us, and our firm specializes in Streetscape, downtown redevelopment, parks and rec, master planning and design. We have engineers and landscape architects onboard. One of the things that's very important to us, if you've been through these slides at all, is really building on the unique aspects of the communities that we work with, and we work throughout the state, but never bringing something from one community over to another just to copy it. So it's always about the history, the culture, really creating a sense of place that is a destination for the community that we're working in. So far, we've been working with Joseph and Paul on looking at the research and the history and the background of the City of Casa Grande, and it's a rich history. We won't go into all the details here, but building on that history is something that we think could really play into the Streetscape from I-10 all the way over to Pinellas. What we'd like to do is just kind of give you a brief overview of who we are as a firm in terms of a couple of the projects, real briefly, that we've done recently in terms of Streetscape. So one of them is the Downtown Tolson Redevelopment Project in the West Valley of Phoenix, a community of about 7,000 people. They did one mile of Streetscape Master Plan, and we did a design. So we did some roadway right sizing, went five lanes to three, custom paving, artwork, Wi-Fi speakers, custom shade structures, and water features, and really kind of built that design based on their culture, their heritage, and some of the heavy Latino-Hispanic culture there. Downtown Chandler's redevelopment, we worked on Arizona Avenues Phase 1 and 2 in Downtown Chandler, where I live, up the freeway here. Since that's turned into Washington Street, multiple phases and multiple downtown phases. But similarly, it was widened sidewalks, really creating that vibrant kind of pedestrian destination. And all of these projects on these Streetscapes, especially if it involves corridor areas and downtowns, is really about long-term economic sustainability. We believe in Arizona First, and really building communities and building up these corridors. So Downtown Chandler had lots of custom light fixtures, art systems, really reflecting the community. Another project is not really a downtown, but it's a Streetscape corridor theme, and that's the Fiesta District Improvements near MCC. That is a one-and-a-half-mile, kind of more of a LID or sustainable environmental design. So we have roadway right sizing that went from seven lanes to five, including the middle turn lane. There was stormwater harvesting, which is stormwater kind of bioswales on either side of the roadway. Multi-use path system, custom shade structures, signage and custom lighting systems, and water features. We even wrapped the poles there with SRP and did some really vibrant kind of glass, recycled glass monuments. Several other projects, we could talk probably for hours about different things, but most notably Downtown Florence here, Casa Grande, Kurt worked on that project, P-83, Western Power Line Downtown Gilbert, and Water Tower Plaza are some of the others that we've worked on. But we're here to give you our commitment that we're going to kind of really drill down, get to the history, the culture, and really kind of bring with your staff kind of a vibrant sense to the Streetscape along Florence. And we're real excited to be here. And with that, I will turn it over to Kurt, our project manager.
Thanks, Jeff. So on this first slide, I'd like to kind of go over the corridor. I know a lot of you are very familiar with this corridor of Florence Boulevard, but we're starting our project on the west end at Pinellas Avenue and going to the I-10 freeway on here. And we've, through discussions with city staff, we've kind of broken it out into three different sections. We have the downtown area, we have the midtown, and then the freeway area. And within all of these corridors, we'll be looking at the elements that you see on the screen of, you know, the right-of-way, what's the right-of-way going to be, aesthetic theming, much to like what Jeff was mentioning, of, you know, taking that history, taking the ideas from the council and from city staff and residents through the stakeholder meetings. We'll be looking at lighting, the shade, and then median treatments also throughout the corridor, and also the different types of hardscapes and then seating areas that we have. So the next slide here is just kind of, it's an enlargement of the areas. So the first one, again, is the downtown Streetscape. So on the left-hand side at Pinellas, we have a primary, what we're calling a primary gateway. That would be kind of one of those entry features that you saw on one of the previous slides. And we'd really like to tie that back into the history and then also the current project that was just finished at the railroad bridge, at the underpass there. So we'd like to kind of tie those together so we have a nice entry, because that's kind of the beginning, too, and you had a really nice enhancement project there, and we want to continue that through to Pinellas and then down through the downtown Streetscape Zone. Some of the other items on here, we had the, you know, secondary gateways. Those would be a little bit smaller, kind of bringing people into the downtown area. And, you know, that will be throughout the corridor that we can have that and keep them coming down towards the businesses and the downtown area. We have a couple of bump-out areas that we're just kind of looking at, you know, maybe mid-block crossings, something like that, just to kind of give a nice pedestrian feel as they can cross those areas. And in the midtown Streetscape Zone, this area here, we really want to connect the businesses, you know, to the area or to the Streetscape, so we want to look at, you know, how they can get sidewalks to them, maybe make patio areas for the businesses, for the restaurants in that area. And we'd also have, you know, bump-outs and mid-block crossings in this area. And the number four, we're connecting improvements and the intersecting streets, so those would be enhanced so people really know which location they're at and which zone they're in. But we really want to connect with the landscape and the adjacent business owners in this area. So when we have stakeholder meetings, that's going to be one of the things that we're going to ask and get into them. Yes, sir?
Florence Street and Florence Boulevard, the Pinellas Avenue goes right in across the tracks. It peters out, but it's right by where South School is. It's the same road as Pinellas Avenue, except it's on the south side of the tracks.
Okay.
And there's a lot of things you could work on on the south side.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take a look at that and maybe have a little bit more conversation with you on that and get those locations that you'd like us to take a look at. Sure?
Go ahead, Kurt.
Thank you. So in the third area is the freeway Streetscape Zone. This is from Arizona, or Arizona, to I-10. And this area, right now, it's a lot of greenfields in this area. There's a lot of, you know, farm fields and such, but this is a big development area. When we're talking with Paul and Joe, that there's a lot of new development coming into this area, and we want to get the Streetscape set. So then, when those businesses or the subdivisions and the rent-to-own come in, we want to have them take that Streetscape and that enhancement, and basically like a guideline for them to go by, that they can then create the corridor, cohesive corridor in that area. And then we also have, you know, the linkages here also at the cross streets and bump-outs. And then to really draw people in from I-10 that are passing by, we'd have an entry monument right there at the corner, something really majestic that people could see for a few miles or maybe a couple of miles or something, and be able to see that and be able to know, okay, that's my destination. I want to go in that area. And then that whole Streetscape theme will draw people towards the corridor and down to the downtown area. So like Joe mentioned, we've been kind of working with them and going through a little bit of the process. These are just ideas, just photos that we've taken or pulled from the web, and just different types of streetlights. So that's one of the aspects that we're looking at, is the lighting. Is there a cohesive lighting that we can utilize from the downtown area as it goes throughout the corridor and vice versa? So these, you know, light poles, you can do many things with them nowadays. You put banners on them, you can light them up, and interchanging the banners is nice, you know, for different seasons or different events. And that helps draw people in and know that they're in a certain corridor and that they're on the right direction. Again, here's some Streetscape enhancements, some of the hardscape that I was talking about, like that could be utilized at the bump-outs. So there's different pavers, different paving patterns. You've seen some of those that Jeff was showing in some of the other projects that we've done. You know, there's different ways to do concrete, if it's colored concrete, similar like what we did in Florence Street. There's many different things and different connections that you can do. The one, the largest photo there has a lot of the elements in it. It has the concrete, then there's paving, pavers, different colors. So it really gives you an idea of the flavor and the vibrant that we'd be looking for in the downtown area and along the corridor. Yes, sir?
There will be some development right in that area they're talking about. Do you get together where what you're doing fits what they're doing?
In the freeway area zone?
On Florence Street, once you cross the tracks, there's an old schoolhouse there. And that road right there where the field is is empty, but they plan to build quite a few homes right there.
Okay. Yeah, we can get with Paul and Joe and look into those plans if they're already within the development stage and go through that with them, so. Yes, we can definitely take a look at that. Good point. So the next item, you know, that we wanted to show is just some different site amenities. You know, from benches, there's multiple different benches that you can do out there that we can look at, some of the more traditional type, you know, the bike racks, the seat walls, the concrete seat walls. Concrete seat walls can also be used as an art element. You can, like in Downtown Chandler, we had the seat walls and kind of the art plinth, and then they tiled around them. They had an art, art, what was it, the, like, RFP? Was it Jeff? Arts Commission, yeah. They put out an RFP for artists to decorate those. And then, you know, there's Festoon Lights and, of course, shade. Shade is a large element that we need down here or in the valley in Arizona, whether it comes from trees or if it's a manufactured shade. So those are some of the items that we're looking at for site amenities. And then the art, kind of what I just mentioned, it's, it really makes a unique place. You know, these are some of the items that we've done or, and some photos that we've taken from the web, just to give an idea and to get kind of the artistic juices flowing. Some of these are from Downtown Chandler and then also the downtown in Tolson, too. So they kind of had a theme in those. And then there's also a product they call lithocrete, that you can do little medallions. That's the one on the far middle, on the far right side, that you can do and, you know, have different elements in that, too, in photographs. Signage. Signage, this is what we're kind of talking about with the primary and the secondary. These are, some of these are very large signs, but down to the more directional and wayfinding signs also. But they're all cohesive and they all kind of blend together and take some of the same elements around. So we have, you know, the Fiesta District and the Tolson. So there's many different things that we can do to enhance the area and make it unique to Casa Grande. And then we also wanted to talk about median treatments, too. So there's many different things, again, that we can do with median treatments. Like Jeff mentioned, there's the LID. You can do a bioswale in those, have the water from the roadway come in into those, like the upper right-hand photo. At the bump-outs or the crossings, we could do possibly a Z-crossing, they call it, and it's the shaded crossing and things like that. And then also monuments and things to kind of make the whole area cohesive and blend together, so we can do that. And then landscape, of course, will enhance that, too. And as Joe mentioned, the project timeline that we're kind of looking at, this is very fluid. We're just kind of looking at different timelines right now. This is our first meeting with the council. It's kind of the introductory one, and that was kind of kicking off our meetings here for the project. So we will be having some also Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, so we'll have those coming up, that we'll give them a presentation similar to, like tonight, and they'll hear about the project a little bit more in depth. And then we also want to go out to the stakeholders. That's the residents and the business owners. Those are the people that we really want to get to and get their input, so we make everybody kind of buy in on it, buy in on the project. So we have some of those coming up also that we'll have, and we'll have steering committees. We'll meet with the arts commissions, you know, the downtown area and everybody else that's involved in that. And that was our presentation for tonight. So thank you. We appreciate you giving us the opportunity to work in Casa Grande and on the downtown and Florence Boulevard Streetscape.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Does the council have any questions of Kurt or Jeff? No, this is Florence Boulevard we're talking about, so.
Yes.
We'll look forward to more details.
Yes, yeah, that'll be coming and forthcoming, and we'll have, you know, once we start taking in the information and everything, we'll come back with concepts and be able to present those to you. We look forward to doing that.
Great. And when you said entrance on the railroad, there's also an entrance at I-10, right? So we're talking both those?
That's correct. Yeah.
Visible for miles, you said, Mayor.
It'd be a bookend, yeah. So we'd bookend the project, so we could do that. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
So I see that you have a, let's see, the stakeholder meetings?
Yes.
Coming up in April, right? Is that when it is? So what type of outreach and who are those stakeholders that you're going to have participate?
The stakeholders?
Yeah.
That would be the business owners?
Okay.
The property owners, the downtown Main Street.
Okay.
Let's see, I know I'm forgetting somebody. The Arts Commission, is there somebody? Chamber of Commerce, thank you. That's the one I was missing.
Perfect. And are you getting a pretty good response? Have you already sent out notices and invitations? Do you feel you're getting a pretty good response?
We haven't sent those out yet, but that's coming up.
Okay, good.
So our first meeting that we're going to have with the stakeholders is just a smaller group.
Okay.
And then the next one will be the larger one. So our first one, that's the steering committee, that'll be a little bit smaller group at that time, but then we'll open it up and we'll get all the business owners and property owners in that, involved in that.
And will you get the, maybe the youth commission or some type of, you know, artists or something from the high schools or something to get a youth, some youth participation?
Yes, I think that would be a great, another great stakeholder to bring in is the youth, because they will be the ones.
They'll be around implementing, right?
Yes.
And can you just give us an idea, so I, I mean, of course, it's beautiful, I love the ideas, and it's so exciting to see that Florence Boulevard can possibly look like this. So what, so this is obviously a concept, design, so implementation, so what happens after this, you know, with these other cities? I'm sure it takes years to implement many of these, but what is the normal process after this?
After this, then, I don't know, actually, if I can get Jeff Velazquez up here, I'll have him kind of describe it, if you would, a little bit better, because he's gone through those more than I have, sir. Oh. Sneak it up.
Right. So J2, their contract requires them, after we complete the design, the final product they have to give us is called a design concept report, which is not construction drawings, but it's kind of the next level. This CIP is actually funded for this fiscal year for $1 million, I think 1.1 million. The design is not going to take that. We're going to have probably 900,000 left after J2 gets done with their DCR. Our next step will actually be to do an RFQ for actual civil design, construction drawings, and get those done, and then we're going to start on one of these phases. You know, we have to prioritize. My suggestion right now is we would start with the downtown phase. But it's really important for us to have the design in place, so when those developments happen on the east side of the corridor by the interstate, that those new businesses can pick up our landscape design and whatever design theme we have and implement it on their private property as they do their front landscaping along their Streetscapes. In the CIP project, I think I've proposed a funding of about $1 million a year to complete the project, right? And the funding source is out of the APS Community Enhancement Fund. That's the funding source that I've asked that the CIP be funded out of. So we don't think this is going to be something to put on the shelf. Our goal is to complete the design and build the project.
Perfect. And Paul and I, I don't want to jump the gun, because of course beggars can't be choosers here, but, you know, Pinellas?
Yes.
So just to get, you know, the design portion on Pinellas, when do you see that we can at least just get that portion?
So our obstacle there is that Pinellas is a state highway.
Right, right.
And so now we have to involve ADOT. So that's a whole different animal. Maybe once we get things started on Florence and ADOT likes what we're doing and says, yeah, that looks good, then we can work with them on working on Pinellas. I agree with you. We would love, I would love to do something on Pinellas as well.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt? Yeah, speaking of that, Lisa, also, maybe we can take the concept, hopefully the entry point, we can use that theme on Pinellas and other places, too, to tie it together. And I know on the east end, it makes sense to do that towards the end of it, because that's still developing, but to have the plans, I like that. Maybe we could work on that entry point sooner rather than later, because that's a big part, you know, as people drive by the freeway.
Right.
To get them to come in, yeah.
So council's already approved another CIP for us in this fiscal year, which is the entryway signage at all our major entryways, right? Pinellas, Gilivan Highway, down south on Chuchu Highway, every major entry point. We elected, staff elected, to let this project run a little bit to kind of figure out what the design's going to shake out.
Yes, so they're cohesive, right?
And then we can go ahead and start working on the design for the other entry well, other entryways as well. So that's definitely something we're working on, and you've already approved the funding.
And that funding is not part of the million that you're talking about?
No, it's a separate 100,000, yes.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Paul.
The center of Florence, at one point in time several years ago, they were going to put solid dividers all the way down, and the mayor at that time, which wasn't you, said that he'd go down fighting if they did that, and, but do you do any of that? Do you do anything in the street itself, or is it just basically best on the sides?
I think they do it all over.
Yeah, no, I think we do it on the sides and we haven't really looked at it completely because we want to do traffic counts and things like that, but we would look at putting medians in, in the area, too, along the corridors.
Control the traffic and.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that we connect the businesses and everybody has their way in and way out.
Walking in the middle.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Any comments, questions? All right. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Joe. All right, Larry, I think next item is actually Finance Department, but it's our general obligation bond presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to bring back the discussion on a potential general obligation bond. Questions to our voters in November. The council may remember, a month ago, staff introduced during an update of our capital improvement program for fiscal year '22, we introduced a number of projects that we felt that were either in the pipeline in fiscal year '23 and/or would in fact be within our five-year period, and recommended approximately, at least at that meeting, $115 million worth of potential projects that we felt could be considered by our voters and funded through general obligation bonds. During that meeting, the mayor and council asked that I add a project, that would be Treckel Road from McCartney Road to Valvista, to the list. And so when we began to evaluate a potential cost of that, we found that what we would be looking at is roughly $125 million adding that additional project. And so the mayor and council directed staff to begin to work with our financial advisors and financing team to put together a potential bond question, or a series of bond questions. And so tonight, what I'm, what we'd like to do is introduce what a typical bond programming package might look like for the $125 million. We also want to talk a little bit about the proposed secondary or the secondary property tax levies or rates that would be charged in those particular scenarios. And in order to do that, I need someone that is much smarter than me when it comes to bond financing. And so we've got Mr. Nick Dodd here this evening from Piper Sandler, who's been working with the city on a number of transactions for the organization. And so I'm going to be handing the baton to Mr. Dodd here in a second, Mr. Mayor, and let him go through the PowerPoint that was introduced as part of the council packet. And then when he's done, really what I'd like to do is focus on. And then, when he's done, really, what I'd like to do is focus on the list of project and our proposed timeline for those projects, and get council's perspective of whether or not that the timing of those project is in alignment with what your expectations may be. So, with that, Nick, if I can turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Nick Dodd, I'm with Piper Sandler, and thank you, Larry, for that introduction. We'll get it in a second. Larry said I was smart and came in a worker in no control. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. We've worked with Larry and the city staff to prepare the materials. So, just a quick overview, and the presentation kind of builds on itself, and there's some things you have to keep in mind when you seek voter approval. So, general obligation bonds require an election. The city in the mid-2000s had a fairly small, relatively speaking, but big for the city at the time, a geo-election. You sold bonds in 2008, 2009, and then again in 2016, when you sold kind of the final series, and you also refinanced all of the existing bonds at the time. Requires an election, and if approved by the voters, you can levy a property tax that's unlimited with regards to the amount of taxes or the rate. Even if you have a targeted rate, if values declined and you had to raise the rate above the target, you could be forced to do so. Obviously, you could supplement those property tax revenues with other resources if you were really committed to, say, maintaining a certain tax rate in the event of declining property values. Those revenues could essentially be anything legally available, so excise taxes, HIRF revenues for, to the extent they were for transportation projects, development impact fees or utility revenues to the extent you improved, in your guys' case, a wastewater project. There are some debt capacity limits. It's essentially a 26% limit, so 26% of your assessed value is the amount of bonds you can have outstanding. Within that 26% limit, there's 20% for a number of projects, which is very broad, includes open space, parks, public safety, recreational facilities, transportation, water, wastewater, lighting, anything that doesn't fit into that category would then fit into a 6% category. The most obvious or notable that we come across a lot of the times would be, say, a city hall. Or, city hall-type improvements would generally fall into the 6% category. And we'll show you those calculations in just a second. So, the first thing that's really important is when you move forward with a geo-bond election, as you all know, you've probably received over the years from the school districts and the community colleges, voter information pamphlets. And you are required to prepare one if you chose to move forward. And one of the requirements is when you make assumptions with regards to assessed valuation, you can only assume future years grow by what the 10-year average was. So, you can see on this schedule here, we've shown you going back a number of years, the growth in valuation. And just as a kind of a real quick refresher, net assessed full cash value, that's really real value. It's the most representative market. Assessed value is how Arizona deals with property taxes, and you apply it to the, you know, property tax rules. And so, full cash value can grow by any amount, any percent. It really is representative market. There are limits on how much assessed value can grow. Existing property owners can't see their assessed value grow by more than 5% in any year. And so, with no new growth, the city would only, could really only grow by 5%. Obviously, if you look at this last year, you grew by 9% on the assessed value, so a lot of the existing property values saw increases up to 5%. And then, you added a lot of additional new projects onto the tax rules, which gets you to the 9%. You can also see there, that's why in a lot of years, the limited assessed value is smaller, because there's just some limits on how much it can grow by. We've also shown what the five-year average was, and that'll lead into some of the scenarios, because we're trying to help you guys understand different assumptions around growth and what that means for the property tax rate. I always tell people I'm a visual learner, so I just had a chart in here that shows the same data, but in lines and kind of colors, but it just shows, obviously, the value for the last really seven or eight years has been growing and growing pretty significantly in the last couple of years. Obviously, one of the other factors we have to think about is existing debt. So, the city right now has $27.5 million in bonds that are outstanding. As I noted, they were sold in kind of three tranches. You've done a nice job of refinancing the debt back in 2016 to lower, you know, the rates that are paid and the interest that's paid. The city may in the future have an opportunity to refinance again, but you won't get that opportunity until 2026. That's, the gray shading kind of shows the bonds that could potentially be refinanced in the future. So, for right now, we just have to kind of work around the existing debt service for the bonds that are currently outstanding. So, if you break down that $27 million, every time you sell bonds, you will make an allocation between that 6% limit and the 20% limit. And so, most of the bonds that the city issued from the prior election were allocated to the 20% based on the types of projects they were. There was a small portion that was allocated to the 6%, and so, you can see here is the allocation of the $27 million between those two debt limits. And then, you can see we've calculated your existing capacity, so that's the current valuation times the respective percentages less the outstanding debt. And you can see right now, you have approximately about $113 or $114 million in unused bonding capacity. One question that comes up is you can seek authorization for more than your debt limit would allow today? You could seek 500 million. I don't know if you guys remember when Central Arizona College in '08, I think, sought 500 million dollars and it failed. They didn't have the capacity at the time. They thought as they grew into it, they would sell those bonds. The models we've done with just pretty reasonable growth in your bond repayment, you would never, under the models that are in here, you would never run up against your capacity limit. So, the assumption is that you'd be able to do your CIP over the next five years if the bonds were approved by the voters, and with a little bit of growth and the paydown on the existing debt, you would be within the limits at all times. So, now, kind of to high-level summary of assumptions, this was the conversation staff had with us, and that really then went into building the scenarios that you'll see. So, we started with $125 million in bonds, and we assumed that you would seek an election in November of this year. The bonds would be sold pretty quickly over a period of five to six years, and that the tax rate for the secondary property tax or for geo-bonds within the city would be capped at $1.50. And so, that starts to provide some of the, you know, the, kind of the bookends, if you We do have several different scenarios with regards to assumptions on assessed valuation growth, and that's really just more for you as policymakers to think about, you know, how you would view if growth was faster. You could let the tax rate go down. You could accelerate projects if you had the bandwidth to do it. You could sell bonds quicker than you otherwise had planned to. So, you would have some options, obviously, as you go through that. And we do identify the various projects, which I know Mr. Rain's got feedback from you on, so I think that'll be familiar. So, for scenario one, we assume that 10-year average, and this is important, because that's what would go in the voter information pamphlet. State statute, of course, isn't super clear, other than you have to use the 10-year average. It doesn't preclude you from doing other scenarios. However, our experience over the years is that gets confusing, and so, you're probably best off just to show what's statutorily required. And then, if you were to move forward, the city would probably want to consider some type of, you know, committee to promote the bonds within the community and maybe create signs and yard, and through that community and community outreach, you could really tell the story, which is, this is what we were required to do, this is the worst-case scenario, but we think, you know, we would actually come in at a different level of tax rate. Scenario two was, the only change in all three scenarios is our assumptions on growth and assessed value. We didn't change how much bonds were sold or when they were sold. We just wanted to really help you guys understand the impact of those changes in assessed value. Obviously, if you look back on a few slides, you did have a couple years of negative growth, and to think that Casa Grande had negative growth, given everything that's going on right now, is probably hard to fathom those days. And so, you know, the 10-year still picks up some of that, and so, obviously, moving forward, the assumption is you're probably not going to have negative growth in the near term, given everything that's going on in the city. So, scenario two was the five-year average, which was 5.5%, probably a little maybe closer to what might be reasonable. And then, the third scenario was just simply an even more conservative. We just essentially assumed one year of 9% growth, similar to what you just experienced, two years of 5% growth, and then, we went back to the 2.75%. So, you get to an average rate of about 3.2% during that time period. So, I apologize now, if you remember, if you didn't remember me, you do now, because I put up a slide with so many numbers and they're super small. But, moving from left to right, we have assessed valuation on the left-hand side. You can then see the percentage growth, so that would be consistent with either historically what we had shared or what those future years were. The existing debt is the city's current 2016 bonds. And then, we calculate what the tax rate for just those bonds would be. We then layer in, and the blue shaded numbers are kind of the amounts of principal that would be repaid each year. And so, you can see in this model, there are six different bond series sold essentially every year. And they were sold to tie to expectations with regards to when the capital projects would be ready to go. And in total, you can see that it averages 100, it totals 125 million. For this scenario, and we do summarize this, in scenario one, your average tax rate was $1.42, and the maximum tax rate was $1.49. So, you can see at that 2.75% growth, 125 million in that particular time period is pretty much the max. Frankly, if the growth rate was a little bit lower, we would have to probably push out bonds or say we couldn't sell that many if the $1.50 cap was, in fact, you know, the hard limit. So, I'm going to keep it on the summary page just for a minute, because the detailed slides really are just the differences in assessed valuation growth. And then, we have some charts, which I think really helped highlight it too. So, for scenario two, when you go to a 5.5% growth on the assessed value, you can see your average tax rate goes down to $1.6, and the maximum tax rate comes down a little bit to $1.46. The reason the maximum tax rate doesn't come down as much is because we hit that really fast, because we saw that first bond sale, you would take your tax rate up almost immediately, and then, it would kind of plateau there for a long period of time. And then, depending on what property values did, it would stay at that level, or it could decline over time. For scenario three, this is the 3.2% growth. You can see the average tax rate gets down to $1.29, and the maximum tax rate is, once again, $1.46. So, here, here we are with a graph now to present. So, the blue boxes, that's your existing debt. We've kind of talked about that. We don't really, nothing we can really do about that. So, you can see, we're structuring the new bonds on top of it, and the new bonds, it's both the principal and the interest that would be repaid to the investors. You can see it kind of peaks out there in 2035, and that's really where your existing bonds then kind of are almost paid off and stepped down. And you could see that then, the, you know, the overall debt service would in fact step down, but we would keep the tax rate up as we expect to sell additional bonds in the future. So, you can see that shows that this is both the assumption for a primary rate of $1.15 and a secondary rate not to exceed $1.50. You would be just above the $2.50 there for, you know, really, the next 22 years, and then eventually, it would decline as the bond started, you know, to be paid down. Scenario two, once again, everything's the same, just the difference in assessed valuation. So, the gold line here, this represents the tax rate, so you can really start to see that growth of 5.5% versus the 2.75. You can see, even though the debt service stayed exactly the same, the tax rate really starts to come down. And that's where, as policymakers in the future, you would have those decisions to make. Do we accelerate a capital project and maybe keep the tax rate up? Or, do we just let the tax rate go down and stay on the planned issuance path and the CIP you had thought about? And the reality is, you won't know that until you get to those years and you start to see some of that growth come in. Obviously, two, you're expecting to issue the bonds in the next five to six years, so once you've made some of those initial decisions, the tax rate will be really what it is, but for maybe some refinancing opportunities. Finally, scenario three, this was just the slightly lower average tax rate with the, you know, just about 3.2% average growth. You can see the tax rate comes in just under the $2.50, really just showing that slightly lower secondary property tax rate. Page 14, these are the identified capital projects, laid out obviously by project name, and then, the amounts for each project, and when they were either fully or partially funded. Obviously, then corresponds with the bond program and the detailed issuance you saw each of those years for those six years. And so, I guess with that, I'll stop, and obviously, there may be questions for staff or questions for me, but I'll pause here.
Questions, anyone?
Can you go back one slide, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, these are the projects.
So, yeah, looking over these projects, and we've run into this before with different elections, will we be locked in to these projects, or that's just the goal? And what we've run into, what we found out too, is if we put this price on it today and something strange happens, like as it has, are we locked into that price for that project, or can we adjust accordingly?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Herman, a couple of responses there to your questions. Number one is that we, staff essentially, put these projects in a timeline to match the bonding program that ultimately had been established at that, what we consider to be targeted rate of $1.50 cap, if you will. And so, certainly, there is some, if the council would like to discuss some changes around the timing of these projects this evening, we can do so. But, to answer your question specifically, these projects, if approved by the voters, these projects can essentially be done at any time. You, once approved, you do not lose your capacity. And a good example of that is our recreation center. If you recall, and I want to tie in that to the cap that we've talked about tonight of $1.50. If you recall, when we issued, when we took the 2006 package to the voters, it was five years' worth of projects. We were going to essentially do one project a year, and the commitment that was, the direction that we received by the mayor and council is that we wanted to build a bond programming around the $1.50 tax rate. And as many of you know, a couple of those projects got delayed primarily because of the change of the economy, and so, essentially, that debt could be issued when the project is ready to move forward. So, does that answer that particular question? As far as the question specifically about the cost of a project versus what we actually are asking for approval from our voters for in a project, this would be the maximum amount that we could issue in geo-bonds. And so, for example, if we had a project, and again, I'll use the 2006 bond issuance, our Vista Grande Library partnership with the school district, we had asked for $4 million. We ended up spending three, so we did not issue $1 million worth of debt. We issued three. And so, again, saving, that all impacts your tax levy that you're charging in secondary taxes. But, you do have those occasions where a project costs you more, when you, you know, perhaps depending on timing of when you do that project, essentially, what would translate Essentially, what would transpire in those cases is we would come up with other financing to fill the variance between what we issued in bond debt and ultimately what the project cost might be.
Okay. And then another thing that we, we, we kind of went over pretty quickly is also other funding mechanisms for this, not just the property tax. Like one that's easy for me to comprehend is, is our, our community trail budget. So we, we budgeted about half, half million a year.
Today, we, today we're budgeting a half a million dollars a year, yes.
And people, and I'm hearing from the community that they want more trails faster.
That's right.
So this is one way because that half a million, essentially we're already have budgeted, we could use to make these payments.
A half million.
To get the projects done sooner and then make the payments and then pay off the project. Is that a fair assumption?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Herman, absolutely correct. It is, it is a fair assumption. And moreover, it's part of the reason why staff recommended community trails. And, and to give everybody a context of that, we've got about a half a million dollars that we generate off of a designated tax. And we've been somewhat balancing the use of those funds annually. They're an operating, operational revenue between building trails as well as updating our various parks around the community. And so what it does is gives us more flexibility. And as you can see in this proposal, it's, it's allocating $1 million a year specifically to trails. If the mayor and council elected to put the 500,000, a full amount into that and not do any parks that year, you can elect to do that during the budget process. If you wanted to split it with park renovations, it, it gives us more flexibility on, on our operational revenue that we've been allocating to the work that we've been doing. But as you can tell, it's a, it, it, it really, it's a small segment every year.
Yeah. And also like widening, widening some of the roads that are not congruent right now for Blackfeather. But we would use development, we could use development impact fees, build them now and then when the developer comes in, we can use that, correct?
Essentially, essentially what we would, one of, one of the reasons that we've added some roadway, roadway projects to this particular bond package or bond question is, is to essentially accelerate, meaning that at the current rate of growth, we are not collecting enough development impact fees to meet all of the demands in the community. And so, but to your specific question, yes, we could essentially accelerate with our development impact fees, any type of project that qualifies under our study for development impact fees. And essentially, when the developer would build the homes, we'd replenish that, that funding. In this particular case, what this would do is that when we updated our study, if, if these are, would be approved by the voters and that work was done, as we updated the study, in essence, what that would likely do is reduce the amount of development impact fee that may be coming in the future.
Larry, on, on Treacle Road, you've got improvements for Rodeo and McCartney, $5 Is that going to finish that off? Are they going to go further or is that pretty well do the job?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tim Powell, what we've done is broken this up into two segments. Staff had recommended to complete that area on rodeo between, on Treacle, between Rodeo Road and McCartney. So that's the $5 million segment.
Okay.
And after the following, after the meeting where we presented a month ago, we ultimately added from, on Treacle Road from McCartney to Val Vista.
Val Vista.
So it would take it, we would essentially end up with some level of roadway infrastructure from Rodeo all the way to Val Vista, along the Treacle corridor.
Treacle then would go all the way up to Val Vista.
All the way to Val Vista.
Yeah. That would be ideal. That'd be a route through town and centered.
Lisa?
Yeah, and that's what I want to talk about because initially we were going to seek 115, then of course added that 10 million. And I, in, in your presentation, you mentioned that we have $114,000 million in unbounded capacity, but we can seek more. So it, so this, now that we've gone up to 125 million, that, that's not going to be a problem for us to, is that what you were talking about that we?
Yes.
So we're, we're going to be okay by asking for 10 million more even though we're unbounded capacity for 114?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. You, you could seek 150 million and you could sell as much bonds as you were comfortable, up to the $1.50 cap based on property values. It would only be at some point in the future if the growth didn't keep pace that you could potentially be at your 26% limit.
Got it.
At which point you would have to pause until you had additional growth on the assessed value.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jeff.
Just favorable comments. The Ed, Ed Hooper Park that they were looking at, 4 million, 10 million, 1 million, there's, Mayor and I were just speaking and they've got a lot of acreage, how much is it?
120.
160. 160. And, and that can certainly be transferred into an ideal park.
A regional park.
And, and as it runs, as it runs east, it will, or west, it will run in eventually to federal land, which we could probably get a hold of if we were going to use it. But.
Jeff, you had a comment?
Yes, sir. On the 12 million in fiscal year '24 and the fiscal year '28 from McCartney to I-10, would you see 12, the 12 million in '24 as improvements from McCartney to Treacle and then '28 from Treacle to I-10?
Exactly, the segments in the two. And, and, and part of the reason for the separation, number one, tying it, we were looking to tie to the, to the bond program that we could maintain at a $1.50 cap. But number two is that we anticipate that there'll be some development and some of that roadway may eventually get built by developers as that transpired. So that was the, at least the reasoning behind the separation in the years. But two segments of roadway, yes.
And do you just not see it as practical to do McCartney to Treacle and Treacle to Rodeo at the same time? It'd be too much?
I, I, I wouldn't say that it would be too much, but ultimately what we were attempting to do is find a balance in when we accelerated these projects and, and $12 million, when you're able to issue 20, 20 to 25 million, you, you have to just, you, you ultimately have to balance that and that was really the driving force. But again, one of the goals tonight is to get mayor and council's perspective on, on the timing of these projects so that we can ultimately adjust that before we start really working on the next phase. And I'll talk a little more about that in a second. So if there's any changes that the council would like to make to the timing of these projects, really tonight or in the next couple of days would be the time to let staff know that.
Larry, I think, I think the, you know, you've, you've got to spread it out anyway. So, you know, you've got to make sure that the projects fit where they fit and I, I think staff's done a good job here. I, I personally don't see anything that I would change.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just one additional comment. Mr. Dodd referenced it. Obviously, if we continue to experience 9% growth or a, a growth greater than 2.75% in the upcoming years, we can in essence accelerate those bond issuances and accelerate projects even more so. This is, this was done, and, and I wanted, this was the second item that I wanted some direction on this evening. In 2006, the mayor and council gave staff a directive that you wanted to have a targeted secondary tax rate of $1.50. And so we put together a bond program, a package around that with timing. And, and because some of those got delayed and, and the assessed valuation growth changed, we, we have quite frankly, never levied $1.50, right? It's, it, I think the highest that we've levied is roughly 76 cents per hundred. But I anticipated that you would want to keep that, that as a targeted tax rate, the $1.50. So everything that we've done this evening ultimately has been based around that as one of the, one of the assumptions. Again, if we see tremendous, if we see tremendous assessed values, you'll, you'll, will have the option to either reduce the tax rate annually and/or to accelerate projects in the future.
Yeah, Larry, I, I think ultimately, I know we'll talk about this when we talk, maybe get to the, not, we're not going to talk about it tonight, but like the voter pamphlet and the information that'll go on it, that will have something in that it shows, you know, if our, if our median house price is X, this is how it affects you and Y.
And, and Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. And I've, I've done some calculations just to let the mayor and council know because that's probably going to be a questions that are, that our voters are going to ask and it is required in the, by statute in the pamphlet. But in 2006, we had run at a $1.50 per hundred assessed valuation. And at that point in time, the, the average assessed value home, home was assessed at anywhere between 125,000 and 150,000. And those rates were, would have resulted in about a $200, $225 tax payment annually. And so today, when you look at what our assessed value of the homes are, it's, it's, it's a little higher than it was in 2006. We don't have the exact number, so we've been running some assumptions that at $250,000 and at a $250,000 assessed home, that would be roughly $375 a year that would be paid in secondary taxes. But there's a lot more analysis.
But they're paying some now, right?
They are, they are paying some now. That is correct.
I'm interested in what the increase would be.
Right, just the variable.
Yeah, the variance.
Yeah.
Not necessarily what the, the actual number is. It's, what is the difference? What's the delta that somebody's paying today versus what they'd pay next year?
You're not paying that much more.
Absolutely.
Right, right. And what about how it affects business property as well, Larry? Is that required in there?
Nick, do you know if, if, if we have to, we do? Okay, I would assume so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you'll be required to show residential, commercial, industrial, and then agricultural. So you have three different classifications because they all go in the rules at different rates.
Yeah, we keep talking about residential tonight, but I know that those tax rates will vary for different types of property.
Right, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I did look just real quick on, in this spreadsheet, when you see the existing debt, you'd see a column to the right of it. Your existing tax rate at the 2.75% for the next few years, while your debt's pretty level and consistent, is about 50 cents, 45 to 50 cents. So it's about a third of the $1.50 already.
Right.
So two-thirds of kind of the total tax rate.
About $125 a year is paying off the existing debt and 250 would be utilized to pay for new debt.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
I just wanted to compliment Larry on your financial leadership. It's really been a benefit to us and that's why we didn't let it get, get you away that time before. So.
Thank you.
This makes you, I just told Lisa, makes you enthusiastic when you look over there and all the different things that could happen as the years come at us.
Absolutely.
Thank you and we appreciate you.
Mayor, I just have one more question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Do you still anticipate this would be chumped into four different?
Thank you for the segue, Councilmember Lavender. That was the third item and I know I'm running out of time here. So ultimately, getting the feedback that we have this evening, we bring on the next component of the team, which will be our bond council. They have been engaged. But ultimately, what we will be doing is working with Tim Stratton from Gus Rosenfeld and his team to begin to look at drafting the questions. I still believe that there will be multiple questions that will, that will ultimately come before the council to be put on the ballot. We are evaluating today how we, how we consolidate those into multiple questions, whether or not we focus on, like I had presented them in the CIP, you know, downtown, city hall, roadway, parks and rec, fire stations. But what, it, it really becomes a very fine art to allow for some flexibility. And as one of the examples, when we, when, when Mr. Dodd and I were, were discussing this about a week and a half ago, is do we want to allow some flexibility in the roadway projects? And, and you brought up McCartney Road tonight and I think that's a good example. If development ends up essentially building the roadway as part of the, the infrastructure they have to bring as part of their development, and we've got it specifically tied to McCartney Road, in essence, it could be a stranded capacity that ends up not being utilized. And so we'll be engaging Tim to ultimately allow, ask him to craft some language that allows us to use the, to use these proceeds more, in a more flexible manner, I guess is what I'd say. But I wanted to get council's reaction about that tonight. Where, where we go from here is that the second meeting in April, the mayor and council will be considering the resolutions along with those, with those questions to, to put those on the November ballot. So if you're comfortable with us drafting those, and I'll try to get them out even in advance so that you can maybe even have a, a review of them in, prior to the meeting, I will, I will ask Nick and Tim and the, and the professional staff to really do so with a, with a desire to add as much flexibility as we can.
But, but real quick, it would be like probably road for road, right?
Yes.
Road for fire station or fire station.
No, that's right. It, it, if it's, if it's road, if it's roadway improvements that our voters gives us, give us the authority, it'll be roadway infrastructure that gets built. I guess just a couple of, just at least one more thing, and I think the mayor may even have a comment he wants to make about some action that took place. We are evaluating this and I've, I know I've mentioned to the council individually that, that we understand that the elementary school district may be putting on that, on the November ballot their override as well. And, and I know the mayor may want to talk a little bit just briefly about just other types of items that may be going onto that ballot.
Yeah, with regard to transportation and the transportation in our community, as you all know, the Supreme Court shut down the legality of the tax that has been collected for the last four years. And so there are two questions. Number one is what are they going to do with the tax money already collected? Separate issue, still to be decided. It will be thrown back to the Superior Court and ADOR, which is Arizona Department of Revenue. So that's still to be determined. The board today did vote to send a proclamation to the, to the supervisors, asking them to put the revised language on the existing tax back on the ballot. So it will be on the ballot come November.
So ultimately, I know that as we've been talking about timing of this general obligation bond, staff is looking for a ballot question, a ballot, a year where there would be no other questions on the ballot, but it looks like there will be competing questions as well.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else have any other questions? I think you're going to give them a little more update on that information. Okay. All right, seeing none? Thank you. We'll, let's stand, let's stand adjourned for five minutes and we'll start up at 7:10.